Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:32, 6:35 PM, do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded, and if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time.
Alan Zerick, USA.
Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the Chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call, Mr. Larrabee, here. Mrs. Gagliardi?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Here.
Mrs. Rothwell?
Here.
Mr. Batello?
Here.
And the Chair is present. Our student representative, Ryan Silverman, is not able to join us tonight. High school is actually hosting a debate tournament with high school representatives from around the region, and Ryan is involved in debate. As a matter of fact, I had the opportunity to attend the first round of debates, the one that Ryan was participating in, and our students did very well, as did the students from Bishop's Fang who were on the other side of the debate. They're all of our students well. It's a very interesting extracurricular activity. In addition, we have with us this evening our Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, our Director of Business and Finance, Lindsay Albernaz, our Director of Curriculum, Elizabeth Haskell, our Director of Special Ed, Lisa Martesian, and our Recording Secretary, Robin Vaccaro. Everyone, I would ask everyone to stand for the torch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have several meetings coming up, which I would just like to announce. Our next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, March 14th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, the Berkeley Middle School Library, and that is the public hearing on our 2019-2020 school budget. The public hearing will begin at 7:00 PM. We have a joint meeting scheduled with the Somerset School Committee, which will be held on Tuesday, February 26th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the school committee room at the North Elementary School. We have a budget workshop scheduled for February 28th, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. And we also have a committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 21st, at 6:30 PM in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library, at which time we will be voting on our 2019-2020 budget.
Mr. Pierce, can I make a, I opened a, just a minor discussion on the calendar that we have. Our budget hearing, the public budget hearing, is supposed to take place on the 14th in Berkeley. Does it make sense, due to the number of folks that generally attend and the size of the attendance, this library is a little bit more accommodative for that, to flip-flop the location of the meeting on the 14th and the 21st, have the final vote on the budget in Berkeley and have the hearing here instead, just because of the fact that generally speaking we draw a pretty good crowd for that?
The reason that it was scheduled in Berkeley was that, I think, the Budget Committee, and not necessarily my personal perspective, the Budget Committee thought that perhaps we should have a public hearing in Berkeley on our budget occasionally, but I'm certainly open to your suggestion.
I agree.
Well, if the two Berkeley representatives don't mind having that in Somerset again?
No, this is the school, you know, that we're having a discussion about, and quite honestly, we generally draw a pretty good crowd for that, so.
And we do have time constraints in Berkeley as well.
Yes.
And any committee that has you in the audit goes long, so, you know.
Sure. Okay.
So, do I make a motion, or is that just something you decide?
Yeah, we'll make that change since it's pretty clear that's the consensus of the committee. All right, so, under Student Achievement Teaching and Learning, the first item that we have on the agenda is approval for ski trip to Smuggler's Notch, March 3rd, excuse me, 1st through 3rd, 2019. Mr. Freitas?
So, we had a trip earlier this year, and there was a lot of, the kids had a great time, we had a great time, and so there was a buzz about doing another trip, so we held a meeting, and hopefully, we need about 35, 40 kids to sign up or to bring in their information, and hopefully, we'll have this trip going, March the 1st. So, I'm here to, I'll be quick, actually, I gotta get over to the hockey game at 7:00, I gotta meet on the administrator there, so the game doesn't start without me, so I'll be quick. So, you know, going on these trips, you know, it's good for the kids, they get new challenges, you know, bonded with kinesthetic learning, overcome obstacles, they, you know, go down tougher trails, or even learn how to ski, and I think there's a lot of good that comes out, and, you know, it's a lot of fun for the kids, and it's, I think, it's something that they will remember forever, so I ask.
Well, we, one of our committee members was on your last trip as a chaperone, and she may want to speak for herself, but she certainly was glowing in her praise for the event and for your leadership of the event, and how inclusive it was for all the students who participated, and how you were reached out to kids who may not have as much experience skiing and made sure they were included, and she also was very complimentary of the behavior of the students throughout the trip, so.
Yeah, thank you. No, it was, it usually runs pretty well, the kids want to be there, they want to have fun, you know, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, does anyone have any questions?
Same parameters as the last trip, same number of chaperones, same?
Yeah, ratio of 1 to 11.
Same agenda, just applied to?
Same thing, just changing the dates, that's all.
The kids actually, you know, have their routine.
Yeah.
Those that have, I guess, have been on it before, kind of shepherd the newer kids?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, so, knock on wood, it's been pretty good.
So, how many students do you have already signed up?
I mean, we sent out the email to the kids, the meeting was high 40s, and then since adding kids on, but I wouldn't know until I get all the checks in, and really, I told the kids the deadline's tomorrow, there'll be half dozen kids at least that'll come to me after the fact saying that they've forgotten, so I really can extend it to the Monday after vacation, just because it needs some time for the checks to be deposited and the turnaround to bring it up to the mountain. But the mountain's been very accommodating, because in the past, you could have all the money at the time, and you actually pay it after the fact, so if that hadn't happened, you know, it'd be okay too, so, hopefully, we have good numbers tomorrow.
And we had, I think we mentioned this at the last meeting, if there are individuals who are aware of, who would like to go but may not have the means right away, I think we had said, the principal had said that we would probably, to make sure that they can go too.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and just the usual caveat that the principal approves, once the size of the trip is finalized, the principal approves the number of chaperones that will be attending.
Yeah.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve the trip with the understanding that the principal will ultimately approve the number of chaperones.
So, moved?
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mrs. Larrabee. Mr. Larrabee, any further discussion? The absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed? In unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will forego the student representative report that Brian O'Leary has to bring us up to date next time he's here. Superintendent, update.
Okay, thank you. I did want to inform the committee of a couple of positions that people recently left. One, I know we acknowledged him a few weeks ago, but Mr. Ray Crook, one of our technology and engineering teachers, had his last day, he was retired about two weeks ago, so just wishing him well, and we did have a mid-year, an unexpected resignation coming from our special education coordinator, Kathy Bullier. She took a job in another district, and Janine Wood, one of our special education teachers here, who recently became certified as a special ed administrator, is serving in that capacity for the remainder of the year. Let's see, the Galapagos trip, we have our students leaving in the wee hours of Friday morning, I believe they are leaving the high school somewhere around 2:00, 2:30 in the morning to make sure that they are on about a 7:00 or so flight out of Boston, so they will be returning on Saturday, the 23rd, I believe is the date that they're coming back. I also, I sent the committee a memo, an update, just a few days ago, with a few items, including the REEDS Annual Report and the South Coast Educational Collaborative Annual Report, two of those, two of the collaboratives that Somerset Berkeley is a member district of. If there are any questions about any of the information that's in there, please do not hesitate to ask. And then, also with that, I included the Somerset School Attending Children Report. This is a report that every district has to file with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, based on the January 1 enrollment each year, so it shows from Somerset every school age child and what schools they're going to, so if you looked at it, it has categories, which ones are attending local schools, local regional schools, vocational, and so on, homeschool, you get to see the whole picture. I have requested for Berkeley's, so when I get that, I will share that as well, so that you can see where Berkeley's, for the most part, where the high school students are choosing to attend school. We know, I think, fairly well between Bristol Plymouth, Bristol Aggie, and here, but there are other options too, out of state, private, in-state, private, there are other options there.
And Jeff, do you look at trends in population with those that are attending the local schools and those that are going to vocational schools, how that might change year over year?
We do. Typically, it's, they tend to be fairly consistent, at least from Somerset, we get, we tend to have about 35 students who are accepted each year at Diamond. Then, they'll, we'll lose some, so if you looked at that, you'll see that, I think we had 34 freshmen, but then that number decreases in grades 10, 11, and 12. We tend to have students who come back to us, as is the case, I know we just had a student just a few weeks ago, a freshman, who returned to Somerset Berkeley after the first four months or so at Diamond. So, that does happen, but for the most part, the students who originally go off, those numbers are consistent. And besides that, I was going to talk about the Director of Business and Finance, but I know that's an item that's on the agenda a little later on.
Any questions for the superintendent on any of those issues? So, the next item that we have on the agenda is an update on implementation of new high school schedule. I thought it would be appropriate for us to have an update ordinarily not focused on social media chatter, however, there has been a lot of chatter on social media about the new schedule at the high school, and I think a lot of it is misinformed. From the time I first began serving on this committee, it was consistently said that the schedule at the high school needed to be addressed, and the issue was raised by me on several occasions as to when we were going to address the schedule at the high school, and finally, and the reason that it needed to be addressed in a particular way was because the high school schedule, as well as the middle school schedule, is laid out in very specific detail in the body of the collective bargaining agreement with the Somerset Teachers Association. So, during the course of the last negotiations, which were concluded last June, there was significant discussion over a period of more than a year, the superintendent and the Somerset Teachers Association formed committees at both the middle school and at the high school to discuss possible changes to the schedule and how it could benefit our students educationally if it was, some changes could be accomplished. One of the concerns that was recognized by all parties was that our teachers were spending about 62.5% of their time in the classroom, where, and that was really at the low level of teacher time in the classroom in comparison to surrounding districts. The one with the highest percentage in the area was Dayton Rehoboth with 75% of teacher time in the classroom, and ranging down from there. As a result of the discussions that we had, we expect now that our teachers will be spending between 72 and 73% of their time in the classroom, and I think that's a very positive development. Naturally, when you have a change like this, there may be issues that arise that were unforeseen, and I'm hoping and expecting that the spirit of cooperation that has gone on since we first started this process is going to continue, and if we need to make minor changes or corrections, the parties can work together to accomplish that. But I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent to really discuss the schedule changes from an educational perspective.
Thank you. So, you each have either electronically or a paper version of what the schedule looks like, so, I think before we dive into this, we just need to understand the existing schedule. It is an eight-day cycle, six periods per day, eight periods in the cycle, so every three days, a class will meet for three days, and then it drops off for the fourth day, comes back for three, and then drops off with, some exceptions, science has an extra period built into the week, but essentially, it's this eight-day cycle, 48 total periods existing within those eight days. This new schedule is, really looks at it from a Monday through Friday perspective, with really a hybrid between a traditional schedule, traditional high schools have about seven periods per day, but then there's also the block schedule where classes will meet, usually four classes per day for about an hour and a half in length. So, what you see here is Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is that traditional look, seven periods in a day, all of the classes meet, and there's some rotation involved that you can see here, and it's just so that not every class is meeting the last period, not every class is meeting first period, and so on, not every class has, is meeting during the lunch block, which can be a little bit of an intrusion at times, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you see that those same seven periods meet, four periods on Tuesday, the other three on Thursday, for 88 minutes long in total. So, that allows for each class to have some extended learning opportunities, it allows science classes to have that roughly hour and a half strength, length of time to do more extensive labs, but also gives a social studies teacher, or an English teacher, or anyone else, some extended time for a more in-depth project. And on Thursdays, you'll see the second block of the day is called a Blu-rayed block. So, this is an 88-minute period that all students will have at that same time, where they're able to get some extra help, whether you call it response intervention, those interventions that we've talked about in the past, or extensions, enrichments, that type of thing. And we are looking at taking those 88 minutes and really dividing into two 44-minute or so sections, so that a student does not have to spend all 88 minutes getting extra help, say, in math, or having some enrichment in some area, they can actually divide it up and go first half for math, second half for science, or something like that, so we want some flexibility in there, and that is something that is, that does not exist in the current schedule, where there's this devoted time, that is, this is part of the teacher's instructional day, teachers are, will be assigned, or, we have actually a group of high school teachers and administrators going to Old Rochester Regional on March 4th to view their similar block of time, how they structure it, how students select to do what they want to do each Thursday during that time, and just to learn from them how it's best been implemented there. So, there is still some work to be done to figure out exactly how that's going to be configured, but we have the time to provide those supports. We started the conversation over the summer about how we don't have supports in the schedule for struggling students. This is going to be that one opportunity every week to have that really focused instructional support for students, that all students have access to. Besides that, then, just the little chart below that is just to show how the lunches would be divided up, that are occurring within that third block of the day, the third block on Tuesdays and Thursdays, fifth block on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. What, another major change, comparing this to the first schedule that I talked about, the one that's currently happening, the current schedule is an eight-period cycle, eight-period schedule, this is a seven-period schedule. So, we are currently looking at our graduation requirements, those will have to be revised, we think, but the biggest impact is there will be fewer studies that are taking place in the future than what we have now, at least that's what we're expecting to see. Because we're shifting from eight to seven, right now, most, I would say, the average student out of the 48 periods over the eight days, most students have 42 periods in their schedule, give or take a few, with six studies. This one, we don't know exactly what that'll look like, there still will be studies, but the opportunity to take nine or more, which some of our students do, that will not be happening. So, students will have studies in addition to Blu-rayed block, just not, we're not expecting the number to be as large, because we're crunching down from the eight periods to the seven. So, that is another significant change that's going to take place, and right now, what we're planning, when students have study, they're just going to report to this, to the media center, so they have, they will have access to all the space, there may be a few other availability spaces that they will go to, but we think that this is going to be the primary space for students when they have those studies in their schedule.
Could you, would you just address the relationship between studies and instructional time?
Sure. The way that we are, we have offered studies currently and in the past, and this is the same at the middle school, they are considered non-directive studies in the eyes of the state. Time that does not count toward our required 990 hours of instructional time that all secondary schools, middle schools, and high schools must offer their students. All students must have access to 990 hours of instructional time each year. So, there is, students can have a few of those studies, but we need to make sure that all students have a schedule that guarantees those 990 hours. Currently, with students, if they're taking, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the number is, four, five, six, or more studies, that guarantee is not taking place, so we need to make sure that that is happening. And this Blu-rayed block time, because students are going to a science teacher for science help, it counts as directed study, so it counts toward those 990 hours. If you're sitting in a study hall right now and you need some extra help in English, but the teacher in front of the, at the front of the classroom is a social studies teacher, it's not counting. So, that was another layer to this, where at both the middle school and the high school, we're removing in large part the traditional studies and replacing it with this intervention time, which took different forms at both of the schools, but it was essential if that happened.
Now, Jeff, I know we're coming into a year where we're going to have NEAS visit.
Mm-hmm.
Will NEAS be looking at the way our schedule is built this coming year? Do they take that into account?
Yes. Yeah, they will certainly take a look at what it was, what it is now, what it will be next year when they're actually with us, and then looking at the changes and why we're making those, yes.
So, students will have a study, maybe not every day, but it might be once in a cycle, or once a week?
It depends on what they're, what they choose for their classes.
What they choose for their classes.
I mean, there are some students now who don't have any studies, they fill up their classes, fill up their schedule with as many classes as possible and choose not to have a study, or maybe there's one over the course of the eight days if it falls next to a PE class or something, but there'll be fewer opportunities, but the opportunities will still be there. But it really does come down to what the student decides to take for classes.
Okay. And the 88-minute blocks, coming from the K38 district, I sat in a similar meeting where we talked about the schedule, and it was stated that we wanted to reduce the number of minutes because we felt we were losing kids at a certain point, that they were in class too long, that they, it just didn't appear to be productive. This seems to be just the opposite, where now we're adding them back in. Can you explain why that philosophy is different from the middle school to the high school?
At a high school with block schedules, it's more common to be at the high school level than it is at the middle school, but as someone who taught in a block schedule and had 90-minute blocks every day, I found them very worthwhile, I was a science teacher as well, so I always enjoyed those extended blocks of time. I know our world language and math teachers really made very good use of them. You can do multiple activities in the course of an 88-minute block, cycling through different activities rather than, it's not one thing that the kids are doing for 88 minutes. You have to create your lesson so that things are changing every 15, 20 minutes or so, that's just good teaching. So, I don't see that as a concern, and if you ask any science teacher, those extended blocks of time come in very handy, and that, the same approach is good for social studies, English, math.
So, the 88-minute blocks, is that going to be for our main courses, or is it every course? Like, will they have physical education in a cycle for 88 minutes? Or they don't have art?
So, if, if you had- So if, if you have, if your physical education class happens to fall on Tuesday or Thursday, you'll have it at one time for that hour and a half, rather than two fifty-minute periods. It's, the times aren't equal, but you only have one transition, so the actual amount, the amount of time that students will be engaged in PE would be the same. And so it depends on how your, how your section of a elective class that doesn't meet every day, depends on how it falls in here. That's some work that the principal, the high school administration will be working on.
And with moving to a seven-day, or seven-period cycle versus an eight-period, are we concerned that there are certain courses will not be available for students? That it might be difficult to get into particular classes?
With, we're gonna know once students choose their classes for next year, we just don't know yet. Students will be electing their classes soon. The way they do it directly in Aspen, it's not a paper-based system, they're going right in, getting their information, so we have it, we have the information at our fingertips right away, once all the classes choose, once all the students choose their classes. Only at that point will we see where the requests are and, you know, what's, if there are winners and loses, I hate to say it that way, but, you know, where the, where the students are choosing to go a little bit more than somewhere else, if there's a class that has traditionally had eight sections of twenty kids and now it looks like we'll have five sections of, you know, twenty, twenty-two kids, we don't know that yet.
And do you think that for certain students that might not double up in a certain course, like in math one year, would that be a, would we discourage them from doing that this year, or next year, or?
I wouldn't discourage that, we don't discourage that now, and every student has their own individual plan, as long as they're making sure that they are achieving all of those required courses for graduation, what they choose to take with their elective time. You know, just as it is now, if there's a student who wants to participate, who wants to take two math classes in a year, wants to take a world language, wants to participate in the band, or in some, in a major music class, and wants to take an art class, as well as having all the other majors, there's no way that they can do all of that. So they have to make those choices already, and, you know, this is, it's not gonna really be any different than it is right now.
So just quickly, the new schedule does not abolish studies, there's still going to be study time available to the students during the school day?
Yes.
And we'll have more information on that?
There'll be fewer of them than what they have now.
Okay, but Blu-ray block is a new?
That's a, right, that's an hour and a half every week of something that's, I wouldn't say is similar to study, but it's more focused than study.
But it offers an opportunity for our students to get directed consultation from a, from a teacher and a, any?
Right. It's far more strategic than a study is right now.
And it's in any class they choose?
Yes.
Does the students get to choose that?
Yes.
Okay, so it isn't voiced upon them, they're not, they don't have to go to history if they, if they don't need extra help in history, they can go wherever they need help, right?
Correct. But, and this is what they still have to figure out when they go to Old Rochester for the visit, sometimes in classes like this, say, okay, Dean Larrabee right now, he, you know, he's getting a fifty in my US history class, I know.
I need to study.
I should, I would, I would have chosen statistics, but, but, you know, I really need to see, Dean, I really need to see you this week for half of it, so I'm going to direct you to come to my class, because you need the help. If you're not, if that's not a concern, I'm not going to make you come to my US history class, because you're doing just fine, go somewhere else where you need it.
Is there, is there an option for the students to choose to go to here, the media center and have a traditional study? Or is that not the intent of the Blu-ray block?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
So I mean, we still have to work out all those details, but the time is going to be, this is instructional time for, for teachers and for students. So the goal is to offer some enrichment opportunities too, so that if you don't need any extra help, and maybe you want to, you're not a musician who's in the band or in chorus or show choir, but you want to learn how to play the piano, maybe one of our teachers will offer piano lessons, and there'll be some of those types of enrichment things that happen from time to time too.
Okay. And as far as the schedule goes on the longer days, eighty-eight minutes is a little bit more in line with what you see in colleges, correct? Your classes have a tendency to be a little longer in length. I was predominantly a night student, and there was no class that was shorter than eighty-eight minutes. So this is a, an opportunity for students to get, I think, a little bit closer to the college experience.
I think college is still, all right, so I'll date myself here, I'm assuming the college schedule hasn't changed that much, where Monday, Wednesday, Fridays are about fifteen minutes long, and Tuesdays, Thursdays are seventy-five. So this is actually very much like, more like a college schedule than what we've had in the past.
More hours in, maybe more hours in the school than in college.
But I think, I'm excited about, and again, this is a work in progress, I'm very happy that there was collaboration between the faculty and the administration to put this together. Again, after going to conferences way back when and learning about the different schedules and actually being in, in other high schools with similar type schedules, I think this brings some advantages to our students, being, having that flexible time, having, especially when we move more into group work and independent work, senior project, I think this allows some flexibility for kids to really get into those learning opportunities. So I'm excited to see what opportunities this brings, both the administration, the faculty to do different types of things that they normally couldn't do within that other schedule that we've had, and of course, the students. So I think, I've been through my work, been to other schools, and they have similar schedules, so there's a lot of the, up until this year, I think they're moving, Dartmouth is changing, but they have a block schedule where it's not even a modified block, it's larger.
They have since shifted.
They're shifting, right. So I think that you see a variety, we used to be what we've had for a long time, but I think that there's some value to implementing something like this. I think a lot of educational value.
And then if you look at the last period of the day, periods one and four are the only two that don't actually meet at the tail end of the day, because we also wanted to make sure that students, seniors involved in those capstone classes, that if they, if they have one of those classes that meet one of those five periods, there'll be times where they, as it's happening this year with capstone, they're leaving during their last period class from time to time to go work with their mentor outside, off of the school campus. So this gives students those opportunities too, particularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays, where they may have that extended time of eighty-eight minutes before the end of the school day to do so.
One more question, or maybe two. Sorry about that. In regards to the Tuesdays and Thursdays with the large blocks, and I understand everything that we're saying, but has there been any discussion on revising the attendance policy and make-up work? Or if a child was out on a Tuesday and they missed due to an illness, these large blocks, they're missing a lot of instructional time just for that one day. So I don't know if there's additional homework or make-up time, or if there would be any consideration. And to piggyback on that, since we're, now I got your head spinning to think about that, would there be any appetite in, and I, I don't want to bring my personal situation in, but if a child was ill and couldn't make it into school, but wasn't, had a low-grade fever, you know, just didn't feel well, a little punky, but wanted to actually call in and listen to a lecture, would we ever allow anything like that? Just, maybe it wouldn't be, they would, they'd still be absent, but we don't have the capability.
I was out for a week, and I wanted to Skype in my classes as a teacher, I wanted to actually teach my classes while I was at the hospital with my husband. And it's very challenging, and I was told by the technology people that it really wouldn't, wouldn't work. So I videotaped my lessons, and my students had me teaching them on YouTube, and I would post everything on Google Classroom, just to make sure that my kids were getting the instruction that they needed, even though I was not in the building.
Well, that's an extreme example, being in a hospital. I'm bringing up more of, you know, I, I, I'm just low-grade, on the border of going to school and not, and the decisions made to keep them home, they don't go to the doctor, they're laying in bed, and could they pick up the call and just even just listen in, just to get the instruction time?
If they chose to do so.
On the telephone?
On the telephone.
Or, well.
Or on speakerphone. I don't know. We can talk about that later.
Yeah, I know Google Hangout is not, I believe Google's changed the terminology from a hangout to something else.
Meet regardless of what.
A Google meet, where they can do that from a Chromebook. They can, they can be present, a student can be sitting at home with one of these and be seeing the teacher's presentation, if it's shared, can, can hear what's going on, if the, if the teacher wants to go down that road. But I don't think we, I don't think we've done that yet, but there's that option, we have discussed that, not really related to this particular situation, but it is something that we've talked about, that we, we'd love to see that as an option for students.
Yeah, I would think that the student would be like, there's no way I want to miss a Tuesday or a Thursday, because I'm wanting to miss a lot of instructional time if I were out.
Well, the same, it's the same amount of instructional time in the day, it's just that it's focused in four blocks rather, rather than in steps, so. But I think that topic of remote participation is different than the schedule, so you can certainly, we can put that on the agenda for a, for a future meeting. Any other questions?
This is Paulson.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll move on. Budget and financial matters, are there any questions on the monthly invoices? If not, I'd ask everyone to review the warrants again and sign them before leaving tonight. Next item is budget update, and Mrs. Gable, you're ready?
No, we had a budget subcommittee meeting just prior to this meeting, went through the budget one more time, but we're getting close to having a workshop for math for the rest of the committee to look at our meeting. We've actually scheduled one additional budget meeting to kind of go over some questions, specifically in how, in looking at the shift in population, so the increased population, and how that affects some of the assessment numbers, and, but, and I think one other piece that we're looking at, the information from the content coordinators on any specific aspects, like how we're in their, their content areas. We're, we're meeting again, and we're looking forward to having that workshop with the full committee to answer any questions and kind of go over changes to this budget.
Do we have a proposed date for that?
Yep, that will be, the workshop is scheduled for February twenty-eighth at five-thirty here at the library.
The next item we have on the agenda is caption Director of Business and Finance position. Although the committee has been informed of this, I'm not sure that there's been any formal public announcement, it's with a very heavy heart that we have report that Mrs. Albernaz has accepted a position with another school district, and will be leaving us, I expect she'll be here for the remainder of the budget season, and will be leaving around, around the end or slightly, a little before the end of the fiscal year to accept another I think she has done a fantastic job serving as both the treasurer for the regional school district and then as the director of business and finance for both the regional school district and the Somerset K-8 school district. It's a very difficult job because she has to prepare and manage two separate budgets, be familiar with two separate reporting systems, one for municipal school district and the other for regional school district. It will not be easy to replace her, she has unique qualifications, many people are aware, some may not be, that she is actually, she is a certified public accountant. So we're sad to see you go, Lindsay, but we wish you the best, we know that there were family considerations involved in your decision, so we wish you the best of luck. And so, I don't know if anyone else would like to add anything?
I would just like to say, as a member of the building committee, when I started working with Mrs. Albernaz and her role as treasurer, what I would like the committee to know is all of the work that was done behind the scenes. Not only did she work, as Mr. Pierce said, on two budgets with two school committees, giving extensive time, of her personal time, to both of those groups, she also did a lot of work behind the scenes to put a lot of processes in place that we didn't have, a lot of controls in place that we didn't have. She was fundamental in, I'm gonna get choked up, she was instrumental in setting up the Aspen program, she was instrumental in helping us set up Family ID. So a lot of the progress we made in just a short amount of time was due to Lindsay's work that she did, and also the way that she carried herself, not only working with both committees, but how she was able to foster relationships with the mass building, school building authority, was above and beyond what we've ever expected. So we were very fortunate to have Lindsay here, and I agree with Mr. Pierce that it's going to be a loss, but we wish you the best.
I would like to chime in on her handling the whole budget for the school district and justifying the amount of money that was spent on the building, she handled all that. She went to research with banks and got the lowest interest rate possible to save money again for the regional school committee. So she was unparalleled, as far as I'm concerned, as a business manager.
Many of us worked in Berkeley for a long period of time to pass a much-needed override and to properly fund the school budget and to properly meet our obligations to the Somerset Berkeley regional school district. And I can say that during the three years that that was really going on, that Lindsay worked tirelessly to provide not only the best information she could to the members of the Berkeley community, but also to provide me with sanity, so that I didn't lose my mind during that, during that process. So I, I am beside myself to see Lindsay go, but I'm happy for her and her opportunity, it's tremendous, her new employer is getting a tremendous employee, and it's a shame to see her go, but I can honestly say, we couldn't have gotten through it without her.
I think we were exceptionally lucky to have her come on board as treasurer, the way she did. And I remember that was a fairly new position for the district, and Lindsay brought all of the wealth of experience and expertise to that position, but was never satisfied to just do that position. She helped write grants, she looked, looked at other opportunities for the school district, always, always reaching beyond what she could have just said, this is what I do, that's it, but, and that, she really has learned a lot about regional school district budgets, which is kind of new for all of us, even though we've been around five years doing this. She's been a tremendous asset, and I know, we wish her the best of luck, but we'll be sad to see her go. We may still call her, because it just is so much easier to ask her questions, so. Thank you very much for everything.
So it was announced on the K-38 of Lindsay's departure as well, so we have already made a few comments, but, I mean, the one thing that Lindsay always, and I, and I said this in the meeting, is she made us all better. Her calm demeanor and just her tenacity to just stay focused on a project and to get it done, and to not let emotion take over, just work and work and work to try to get there. Just policies, procedures, how can we be more efficient, how can we ensure that we're doing things the right way? It's demonstrated in the audits that we've had, and how we've been complimented on how well things are done. So yes, your new employer is getting a gem, and you will be dearly missed for years and years to come, and we wish you the best.
Yeah, Lindsay accepted the position a couple months after I got elected, so she's basically the only business manager I've known, as well as, you know, Jeff at the same time. And the situation that she walked into in K-8 was, trying to find the right words, it was extremely ugly. The budgets were not balanced well, they weren't, the different departments were not, the different lines were not accounted for well, and I think that was just years and years of kind of mismanagement. In the first six months, or basically the first year, Lindsay, I'm not sure when she ever made it home, because all she did was make sure that she got everything, she got all the controls and processes in place to ensure that the district would be run correctly, not only for the, for the time period then, but for years moving forward. So, you know, although she would be dearly missed, I think the word So, you know, although she would be dearly missed, I think the work that she's done over the last several years will basically stay in place and help the next person, the administrative groups that come in. So, although a lot of those people that, you know, for those positions in the future may not know Lindsay, they will know the work that she's done and should be grateful because it's her. So, thank you very much.
Can I just say something, though? I have never worked this, in this capacity, with more professional individuals that are on this board. You're all working professionals, you all have jobs, and you still dedicate your time to the school district, and I am honored to have worked alongside you, to know every one of you, so thank you.
So, we will be posting the position of Director of Business and Finance very soon, hopefully?
Yes, so I'm not sure, this is probably a good opportunity just to talk about what this committee is, because we actually have, obviously, Lindsay works for both districts, both school committees, so what the process is going to be in an expected timeline. Lindsay's already gone through, we've compiled the different job descriptions that we've had between 2011 and 2013 or 14, between the two districts, there were several different job descriptions that were put out there, Lindsay has gone through and really has done a nice job in identifying all the most important things and categorized them in such a way that it's, is much better. But this is a position that is ultimately hired by the school committees, and I want to make sure that, I know Somerset's represented here tonight but not fully present, what the expected next steps are. I can share that with everyone, but we do have a joint meeting on Tuesday, the 26th. I would expect maybe this to be an item on that agenda so that we could discuss it then. I'll have that ready for them for your review, and hopefully we can come to some agreement that night, so we can post this the very next day. That's at least what my expectation, my hope would be, but I'm not sure if the committee feels differently.
Well, when is the next K-8 school committee meeting?
March 11th.
You have the joint on the 26th?
I mean, our next meeting is really a joint meeting that we have with...
So, you would present both the updated job description as well as a proposed process for evaluating the interview?
Yes. A timeline to make sure that interviews are taking place, initial interviews, who would be on those teams, and then ultimately the final interview would take place in front of both school committees.
I had to wait two, two weeks to post. I thought we, maybe the discussion was just between you and I, that we were going, we were going to send the proposed job description to the two chairs and assuming that everything looked fine, that we would post as soon as possible. So, I don't, although even if we agreed to that, I suppose that the K-8 school committee doesn't have a meeting before the 26th, so it might be an issue.
Be a mixed committee.
I think this is going to be a, you know, a difficult position to fill in this timeframe that we have, and I hate to see us lose a couple of weeks, but...
I think part of the issue is having to do between the two committees and kind of...
So, I guess I'm slightly confused, what's the, are we going to discuss what the position's responsibilities are? And then... I assume the only thing that we, is really just to give final approval to the posting, that's all.
But I would imagine the job description's going to be static, correct? We're not going to change or modify it in any way?
It needs, it needs to be updated because the previous one did not reflect the two, the two districts owning the one position.
And I think ideally, if someone with experience working in both the municipal school district and a regional school district...
Or a quick learner.
Would be ideal, yes, or a very quick learner, but there are, there are differences and so.
Yeah, I believe we currently have, we have a Somerset Berkeley job description from either 2011 or 2013, then we have the Somerset position from 2014 that was originally posted as Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer. So, that's the way that job description is currently written, so we don't have one with both districts sharing a Director of Business and Finance.
I think that's...
That is a short, blue situation, but...
But it is a key, I mean, this is a key position to, to your team, and so we have to go, I think the process is as important as the job description, and in hopes that we get a right person to fill that. You've assembled, and I, I know you have other members of your team here, and we don't want to wait till they leave, hopefully not any time in the near future to, to compliment all of them, you have a great team, and we want to find the right person to help fill Lindsay's shoes and continue the work that all of you are doing, so. I think the process is as important, and I think it's important to have both committees on the same page and forward the way we, we don't lose sight of the wrong foot. So, that's why, if it's, February 26th is the first day, that's my opinion.
In your experience, this is going over, how long would it take to fill the position of this importance?
Previously, when, in my previous district, when we had this, we went through two interims for about six months each before we landed on the right person.
That's not the answer I was hoping to get.
But, I mean, that's, that's my, my own experience. We do have, Old Rochester right now has an interim business manager, there are several other districts who have either had difficulties filling the position so far, just in the past six or 12 months, or who are currently or about to look.
As I said, it's going to be a difficult position, but...
Yeah, you're right, that happens sometimes.
Well, so, all right, if we don't have any alternative, then we'll, we'll, I guess, hopefully resolve this and have a posting immediately after our meeting on the February 26th, I suppose. We've made this announcement with two separate school committees, so perhaps the public would be aware that there will be a vacancy in this position, and if anybody's interested, start thinking about it. All right, now, under new business, the superintendent's evaluation, just for informational purposes, the Department of Education has established a process by which every superintendent in the state is expected to be evaluated on an annual basis. There is a, there is a process, a protocol for the evaluation of a superintendent. It requires that the evaluation be conducted in public, the superintendent is the only position that is required to be done in a public forum, and the first step in that process is for the superintendent to report to the school committee on the progress which he or she feels has been made on the goals that were set at the beginning of the previous year that is about to be evaluated. The committee then, having heard that presentation and reviewing the documentation that is provided along with the presentation to complete an evaluation form, which is also structured by the Department of Education. And then, once those evaluations have been prepared, the evaluation is discussed in a public meeting, which will happen in the near future. So, because it comes at the same time that we're in the budget process, we'll have to decide exactly when we will conduct that public evaluation, but it will be soon because for, for a couple of reasons that were kind of beyond everybody's control, it's, the process has been delayed a little, we hoped to get it, get it completed by close to the beginning of the, of the new year, and that we haven't been able to do that, but... So, at this point, I'll ask the superintendent to provide his report or presentation with regard to the goals that he, we established jointly at the beginning of the year and the progress that he feels have been made.
Thank you. So, I have shared that digital binder portfolio of sorts, called a Live Binder, so I, I believe everyone has access to that, so I, I'm just, I'll, I'll just describe some of the information that's in here. In one of the first halves, I did provide that, the evaluation instrument, along with the superintendent rubric highlighting those, the areas that the school committee identified, I think it was two years ago, rather than focusing on every single indicator within that rubric, focusing on just specific ones. Then, there are three types of goals for the superintendent, there's the professional practice goal, the student learning goals, and district improvement goals. Superintendents are to choose one professional practice goal. This past year, I really wanted to focus on NEAS, Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, as it was referenced just a little while ago, going through a new evaluation process. The standards have been completely revised, beginning in 2020, where we have our decennial visit happening in 2021 with a pre-visit occurring in later on this fall of 2019. So, the, the process is completely different than what we've had in the past, the standards are completely different. So, with that, I really wanted to learn more about this, I have been involved with the NEAS process in the past, going on several of those visits. So, this past year, I attended a few different seminars, two of which we actually hosted here for NEAS, which was beneficial to our administrators, one we didn't have to pay the registration fees to attend, and were able to do it right here under our own roof. That was really beneficial. But besides those two, in the fall, I attended the NEAS Fall Showcase, and really focused on one aspect of it called the vision of the graduate, it's a new element of the NEAS standards. So, I spent a day with educators and administrators from throughout, throughout New England, learning about that vision of the graduate and how best to create one. And then, a few weeks after that, in late October, I attended one of those collaborative conference visits, that pre-visit that I just referred to, at Silver Lake Regional High School. Silver Lake is Kingston Halifax area, it's a high school very much like ours, and I spent two days there with three other members on this collaborative conference team where we just, we spent two full days in the school, really diving deep into their self-report, and then giving them their recommendations. So, no, we're going to be in that same position next year, it was really beneficial to see how a school presented their self-report and all of the information, as well as what the visiting team is really looking for. So, that was my professional practice goal. Of the two student learning goals, one was developing, the second one, second goal overall, first of the student learning, is technology integration, developing a multi-year technology plan with this, and I've attached a copy of it for you, as well as a summary and self-reflection. But essentially, I had several meetings with teachers last year, gathering some feedback from them, meeting with Mr. Levesque, gathering his input, and putting together this technology plan, which is based on the U.S. Department of Education's National EdTech Plan, but then incorporating the IST standards as well. It has five main goals. First involves learning, second involves teaching, third is on leadership, fourth is on assessment, and fifth is on the infrastructure. So, if you look through that, you'll see that what we're planning from really 2018 to 2021, those, the next steps that we have for further integrating technology, the expectations that, that we want to have for our students, for our staff, professional development that we're going to need to make, as well as some of those steps that Mr. Levesque will be taking in terms of infrastructure developing, those key renewal cycles for budgeting purposes, inventories of student and teacher devices, and all of the network infrastructure that we have. The second of the two learning goals was 21st century skills, but it, we focused really on two main areas, and then the third one sort of developed during the school year. But I want to focus on adding computer science to our program of studies for this year, which we did, and I wanted to focus on that capstone project. Both of those were things that were identified in our future search. Proud to say that we, we found a phenomenal computer science teacher, we've talked about this before, you've heard from him already, so we have the foundation of a very strong computer science program growing here at Somerset Berkeley, and then the capstone project, which I've talked about in the past, we have two English sections right now of students, it's about, somewhere in the low 30s, 34, 35 students perhaps, of students who are, through their English, senior English class, are involved in this capstone project. They're doing, they've chosen a topic to research, they are going out, they found a mentor, they're working with those people consistently, developing a project to study, doing research around it, and ultimately developing a product that's around the work that they're focusing on, and there'll be some presentations at the end of the school year where they get to open up with judges and share all of their learning throughout the course of the year. It's been, I, I've shared with you in the past some of the topics that kids are doing, in fact, just last week, I think I shared my update about two of our students who went to Berkeley Middle School, their projects focused on the transition of students from middle school to high school, and they, they both looked at two different aspects of it and were involved in the, in Somerset Berkeley's presentation to Berkeley eighth graders, and from what I can say, that component of it was very, very strong, they're going to be doing it at the same presentations at Somerset Middle right after February vacation, but they're doing these things that they wouldn't have done before, so, very excited to, about the capstone project. And then, the other one that was sort of unexpected a full year ago was the Innovation Pathways, it's something that Ms. Haskell and I, we, as you know, applied for this Innovation Pathways grant, were unsuccessful, but we were told it was not yet, and we've had some meetings with Desi, we actually had a very lengthy meeting today about this, and continuing forward, it will be a, that aspect, I want that to be, whether it's a formal goal of mine, but certainly a focus for, for the 2019 calendar year. The district improvement goal, I will not go into all the details since I already did, it's on the high school schedule, that was one major component. And the last is student discipline review, this was one that caught me a little bit by surprise, I was expecting to see a different picture. I've included some of the conduct information from Aspen, so this was something that was a goal, but then once I started digging into it, it just, it wasn't there. I was, I was expecting to see, or have evidence to say, you know what, we really need an in-school suspension program, rather than relying on out-of-school suspensions, or something maybe in addition to Saturday schools. I've shared with you the information for fall of '17 compared to fall of '18, just so you can look at the same timeframe over two different school years. The total information is about, the total number of incidents are about the same, both a little over 800 incidents total from all different kinds of discipline, you see the number of detentions, the number of Saturday schools over those two times, and then the, the out-of-school suspensions, and say, this, this past fall... And say this this past fall, between the first day of school and the end of December, we had two out-of-school suspensions that were greater than 10 days. Okay, so usually those are usually for either drugs or violence, school violence in some way.
So we had two?
We had two. We had, let me see, 15 out-of-school suspensions, short-term out-of-school suspensions without services. So these are typically suspensions because we don't have services, there are not students involved who have IEPs, they're not suspensions that have related or that are in total of 10 or more days, not just for that offense, but cumulatively. And they're usually not for they're for non-drug, non-violent type situations. It's just suspensions for a variety of reasons. And then we had 20 suspensions out of school with services. So some of those other incidents that I just made as exceptions, those are the others. So it's not really in terms of an in-school suspension, when we have, let's see my summary here, 15 short-term suspensions without those services, it's not to have an in-school suspension room because Saturday school is doing such a good job of assigning those, addressing the discipline issues without ever taking a student out of out of class. Because it's not we're not providing it in school, where still they're under this roof, but they're not in class. It's not giving them the out-of-school, which is the worst situation that we want, but they're coming out on a Saturday morning. So that is really the the best option that we have. Most schools do not have a Saturday school, we do. But I was looking at, in addition to that, should we have an in-school suspension? And for the entire fall with 15 incidents that, and I'd have to dig deeper to see exactly what all of those were for, at most 15 that would have been applied on in-school suspension could have been applied to it. I don't think it's feasible to have, you know, have an in-school suspension room, have staff to manage something like that when they're that infrequent. So that's I was expecting to see something different than what I saw there. So it was a goal, but then once I really started digging deep into this and looking at our Aspen reports, looking at the conduct data that we report to the state, it really wasn't going anywhere, and so it's it was uneventful for me. Which I guess is a good thing. We, you know, it's, like I said, I was expecting to see a different picture being painted, but fortunately, that wasn't the case, actually. And in addition to that, so those were the five goals, and then you also have in there the four standards. So everyone involved in the educator evaluation system has the same four standards. They the language is a little bit different, whether it's a teacher, a principal, or superintendent, but standard was standard one is instructional leadership, two is management and operations, three family and community engagement, four is professional culture. Management and operations is that is unique. Teachers obviously wouldn't have a management and operations aspect. But I've included some information addressing those indicators that the school committee has decided to focus on. Sure if there are any questions at this point?
No. No questions.
So is the, I'm sorry, have we decided on the process for? So we have all this data that we can review, we can reach out to if you have specific questions. The next step is for us to take that evidence that you've provided and then complete the evaluation for it.
Yes, and actually, I believe the document that you have is a PDF. Is that right, Robin? So if you want something, you can print it out in handwriting on it, or if you want to type into it, we can send you the Microsoft Word version of it?
Yes.
If that's better?
Yep, that's what we have.
Okay.
Yep.
So Robin will get that to you, so you can just type into that if you wish. But on the the first page of that, it's for each one of for each of the goals, it's did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. Those are the five different categories to choose for the professional practice learning and district improvement goals. And then for each of the four standards, it's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary, based on the entire standard, not on the individual indicators within the standard.
So is the timing for that, we I know we're in the throes of budget preparation. Do we have a timeline for returning those completed evaluations?
We haven't set a time, we haven't set a date as yet, and I'm looking at the schedule I hate to wait till March 21st to do this, but the other the other meeting is the 14th, which is
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And I think the 26th is too short a timeframe.
So
And that's a budget.
So are we sending them our completed evaluation documents to the superintendent evaluation committee? Is that probably done in the past? Or do we?
No, there's an there's an issue with that. So I think we've generally submitted them to the recording secretary.
Thank you.
But
We don't have a date, but we could we you could give us an update, maybe on February 28th, as to who we return it to, and then we'd have time between then and March 14th to complete it and return it, and then that way, on March 21st, we have the
So
The meeting?
Don't we usually return it to Robin?
Right, right. So we just confirm that February 28th and make sure we return it to her by the 14th in order to have it right for the
March 21st?
Yeah. Is that reasonable to you, Robin?
March 21st. Yeah, I mean, that's quite a bit of time. I just do you have any objection, Mr. Schoenover, to this being deferred until March 21st?
It for this point, it it is what it is. What I would like, I would like to start working, I'm not sure if this is a meeting with the the subcommittee for superintendent's goals and evaluation, to work to address the 2019
Yes.
Plan. I'd rather, when this gets finalized, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we have a plan together for 2019. So let them overlap rather than let one end before the other one begins.
So
So what's the plan?
So the plan, the plan is to revisit this on the 26th, but at this point, we'll be looking to submit them on or about March 14th.
So the recording secretary will send us the form to complete?
Yes.
And when we meet on the 26th, we'll be in eleven, I'm assuming, asking final questions we might have. Is that sensible?
I would tell you it'd be better to do it on the 28th, because the 26th is a joint meeting, the 28th
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the 28th.
28th would be better.
And then everything into the recording secretary by the 14th, so we can review it on the 21st.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so if there are no further questions on that, let's move on to new student activity club approval esports.
Okay. All right, you have a letter in front of you from Mr. Lenzinski describing this esports club, I believe I referenced this at our last meeting. The MSAA, Mass School Administrators Association, has recently sanctioned an esports program. The MSAA, and you can see from his letter here, cheerleading is an MSAA-sanctioned activity. It is not an MIAA, the Athletic Association. It's not considered a sport by that means. So it's
It's going to say
Similar to to cheerleading in the eyes of the MSAA. Robert Kraft, as he's represented here, actually owns one of these esports teams. He owns the Boston franchise of it. I didn't realize this, but he's also referencing that esports could be a an official sport of the 2024 Olympics. I was unaware of that. But anyway, there is a deadline that high schools need to inform the MSAA by this Friday, whether or not we they're going to participate in the the spring season of this esports program. Esports, there are, it's just as it sounds, it's a video game competition. There are three specific games. They're listed in that third paragraph about halfway down, League of Legends, Smite, and Rocket League. I'm not familiar with any one of those three. And Mr. Lenzinski, just to determine if students would be interested in this, he sent out an email or a survey to students and had a pretty quick response, positive response from students. He's followed up with some other communications with students and has about 30 interested students right now to participate. It does cost, and I forget the exact number, is it?
Eighty?
Well, 80, but I believe it's 70, 75 or 77 per student to participate in the competitions. And Mr. Lenzinski was requesting having an $80 fee so that there could also be a t-shirt purchase for each student to participate in this. In addition to that, I have received a demand to bargain from the Somerset Teachers Association for the advisor or co-advisors of this to share a stipend, you know, starting out at $500, which is, I think that's the entry level for for clubs and activities. So that would be an additional cost to this, rather than that per-student cost. So with that, you know, if you have specific questions before you discuss this, but I mean, that is the the request from the building principal.
Is this broken out into teams? Is this an individual sport? So if there's 30 students interested and excited to participate, are they all going to have the opportunity to do so, or is it more of a?
I think it's it's a level of both. It's maybe like tennis across country in in terms of the sports, where you have individual winners, but then you also have a team score at the end.
And so if, for example, tennis is a no-cut sport, this would be
If you if you want to participate, then you would pay the fee and you're participating.
And similar to DECA, I would imagine, too, is another organization where you have a massive amount of students who participate, what, closer to 90, I think, around. Some go on based on their how they perform in those competitions, and some they just continue to be part of the club.
Right. This past fall, I know that there, I think it was the first time where there was this competition in Massachusetts among high schools. There was a competition just recently between the the finalists of those. I don't know the details of exactly what one of these competitions looks like.
So for clarification, it's not a sport, it's a club, so it does not, it wouldn't fit under the user fee? They wouldn't have to pay user fees for this?
Well, that's what the the request is.
For $80, but that's less than what a user fee for a sport would be.
Right, we're they're looking at it in terms of it's only part it's partway through the year. There isn't
So next year, it would be included in the
Just as as everything else is, correct.
But I don't think it's all athletic.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
It's not. It's cheerleaders play in the athletic, do they have to pay in the athletic? You have
It's an athletic fee.
Yeah, it's an athletic fee, even though it's not an MIAA sport. Yes.
But this would not be would not be considered an athletic user fee?
I I would I would apply the same, well, I mean, it's
Would you be transportation, like they would need?
No, it's all it's because it's esports, it's all done here.
Well, I think the issue is, as it pertains to the athletic fees, is when you hit that cap, when you have a student that's participating in a number of sports, I think, as it is now, Lindsay, if somebody's registered for a sport and you hit a cap, it doesn't go over a certain cap. I don't know if that particularly is particular just to this. I think that's something we might have to look at overall, because I know we talked about that as a committee about the various charges.
Just like we brought with athletic fees and then banned and showport fees, if a child or if a student is involved in two activities, the third activity is exempt.
Right.
Just needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, and I think this also targets a group of students, not that you you can, you might have a student athlete who is not playing a sport, who doesn't play baseball, tennis, or spring track, who might want to participate. But I think the other the idea, too, is that this may involve students who otherwise are not participating in athletics after school or other, you might not be in any of our music activities, and it's giving another group of students an opportunity to engage in something at school with their friends in a structured way that doesn't currently exist.
I would agree with that. And one thing I would I would I would request, if the committee was to to look at something like this, too, is that is there going to be a level of parental permission on a student getting getting involved in something like this?
Is there going to be a level of that?
Parental permission?
Oh, yeah.
In order to sign off on something like this, yeah. Because again, I don't know these games, and I don't really know much what's involved in them, but I think that it would be just courtesy to make sure that the parents know what their children are signing up for.
Right, and with not knowing these games, I would assume assume that they are non-violent? Or, you know, are we opening ourselves up to?
No, that was my first question, when I having students, they're not playing Fortnite, they're not
Call of Duty, or anything like that.
Right.
I have to ask this question. So like most athletics, right, you're eligible for a varsity letter if you play a varsity sport. Is it the same as cheerleading? I think cheerleading, you get a varsity letter, right?
I don't know. Yes.
Well, is a comparison, isn't there a comparison drawn in here in the principal's letter? Maybe I
Right, in the first line, and that, it's an MSMSAA-sanctioned activity like cheerleading is.
As opposed to MIAA, which is most other athletics. So and I'm sorry, you did say that if you are cheerleading, you are eligible for a varsity letter, right?
Yes, I actually asked that question to one of my cheerleaders in the classroom today. I asked if they actually pay user fees as well.
And they do just like
Absolutely. Plus, they pay additional funds for competitions.
Are we sure, are we sure that there are there are no competitions? I mean, I don't know, I don't know anything about this game. I don't know how it compares to Pokemon, for example, which I, again, know nothing about, but I do know But I, I do know that, I do know that they have competitions where people travel considerable distances. And I can just see us being asked to spend money on buses. I'm a little hung up on buses at the moment, on some transportation expenses that were incurring for various extracurricular activities.
This is all done on the.
I, you know, it was presented initially that there'd be no cost. Now I'm hearing we have a demand to bargain over this. And that comes completely out of the blue to me. I don't feel I have enough information. This is being presented to us on very short notice because the season is apparently beginning very soon. So I personally will not support this at this time.
I, I, I don't, I mean, I recognize that there are some issues. I don't, I'll tell you, I like the idea that this attracts or provides an outlet for kids who normally wouldn't have that opportunity. We of course have to look at all the costs involved, but if it is remote and we're looking at a stipend for our teachers, and I think the superintendent said that it would be in that range. I don't know, I think that needs to be ironed out. But I, I think that there, those are issues that can be resolved in order to provide our kids with, these kids who wouldn't otherwise be involved.
And, and this kind of act. And in the letter, it does say, two of our teachers have agreed to volunteer to be.
Yes, that's what I read, and now I'm hearing that we have a demand for, for to bargain over this. I also understand that in the past, when new, new organizations like this formed, the advisors were served on a voluntary basis without compensation and to see how the program would go over with students, whether it's something that was sustainable. So again, I'm maybe showing that I'm a little annoyed by this whole thing. And I just, I just don't think we have enough information at the present time to make an informed decision on this. But that's just my personal perspective.
May I make a comment?
No, because we have no public input at this point.
Well, I mean, there's always times where we try things out and it's like a pilot. If there's, if we could work it that there's no cost to the district and we could see what the participation was and the excitement and what the pros and cons would be, I would be open to that discussion.
Even if the fee structure to the students fell slightly out of what we normally have, as we said, kids who aren't in those other things, I think the, if it takes off, it would certainly be included in the policies of committee to review how it fits in with everything else.
I would be, I would rather err on the side of caution. And I agree with the comments that we're looking for other outlets for our, for our children. But my recommendation would be to take this time to explore it fully and have an understanding of what this will incorporate. Also from a marketing perspective, if we rolled it out next year, there might be a little bit more information that the committee would have. Where I have some concern is that we continue to add clubs and we really need to get a handle on what all of these extracurriculars are costing. And so I wouldn't be in favor right now. I do think it's a good idea in theory to do this. I do think it engages another part of the population. I'm not sure why we need to make that decision right now. But I would be all for doing further exploration to start looking at it for next year.
And these two gentlemen who do have the information, maybe they can come down and speak with us or tell us what it's about and what their experience is and what they experienced in their competitions and what the competition is like.
Well, we would be making the decision that we would not be moving forward with the current season because that seems to be the, the reason for the short notice and review this evening, correct?
When does the season begin?
I'm on the, I'm, I'm trying to find that information right now. I don't know when this season begins, but as I said, the deadline to, oh, February twenty-fifth, spring twenty nineteen, season begins. Which is why there's that February fifteenth deadline.
So is the reason that we're looking to defer because we need to get more information on who's gonna run it and the type of stipend we're looking for? Or because we want to gather more information about?
I'd love to see a formal schedule. I'd love to see how this is gonna set up. I would love recommendation from Lindsay and Jeff as to what those funds, what fund, what account those funds will go in, what the schedule looks like specifically, what the time is that these kids will be, you know, committing to on a weekly basis for a video game. I'd like to make sure that there's a plan as far as how this is gonna be rolled out, that parents are aware that their kids are gonna be signing up for something like this. I don't think it's, it's hard to ask. I don't really see what the downside is in us waiting so we do our due diligence. And then I think we as a committee can be comfortable and confident that there's a process when we start introducing new clubs into the student body.
In terms of the parental permission, assuming that all of this, the fee would go through family ID, just as, as parents, when we are signing our, our kids up for sports, there is that parental component to it.
Yes.
Maybe the, maybe the permission slip or the information for esports would look a little bit different than it would be for football.
Right.
But still, that information is there and the parent at the end of it has to say, I agree.
Perfect. But there's a schedule that when we sign up our kids so we understand what it, when we're using new groups such as this, how much time is my son or daughter gonna be spending on this type of activity? And that, you know, so just to give the parents full information and disclosure on, on what this is, since it is a new club.
That's another concern that I have. It seems like for many parents, the biggest problem is how much screen time kids are gonna be allowed. And I just, I don't have an understanding of, you know, sometimes we have issues with the amount of practice that some of our, some of our extracurricular activities have and how, whether that's interfering with academics or other outside activities. And I don't know how consuming this might become also. So it just, I'm concerned that we don't have, maybe, maybe I should be more informed about this particular sport, but I'm not.
Another question would be, who, who oversees this? Is this the athletic director?
It would be the advisors of the, the paid advisors of this club if they're.
So does cheerleading fall under Mr. Francis's?
Yes. I guess it's just that correlation, we're using it as a comparison, but yet we're not parallel with them.
I think we're getting thrown off by the word sport.
Yeah, right, I suppose.
It's, it's esports.
I'm assuming if Robert.
And we're saying that it's gonna be the Olympics.
Yeah, if Robert Kraft's involved, then it has to do with money.
It's gonna be an Olympic sport.
Do, whenever we introduce a new sport or club, does that always come before the sport?
Well, my position would be that it definitely should. There have been some spontaneous births that came to neither the committee or the superintendents, as I understand it. And I am, feel very strongly that that's not an appropriate process. We have other, I, I mean, there are, there are, there are other sports that have some strong advocates that might be added to our, you know, our extracurricular activities. And, and there are significant costs related to those. So we, apparently there isn't as significant a cost to this as there would be to others, but I just think we ought to fully understand exactly what the costs are and what the nature of the sport is before we.
First of all, I, I definitely agree with everything that Mrs. Field said, right? Like, if you're gonna roll something out like this, there needs to be full understanding, full disclosure of what's gonna happen so people know that they're kind of, you know, getting involved. Totally agree with that. I'm just kind of questioning, like, do we have the jurisdiction over this? And the same goes for like sports, right? If you wanted to add a freshman soccer team or, you know, eliminate one of, one of the teams, that doesn't usually come before the sport. I would think that's more of a discussion with the superintendent, the principal, and the athletic director.
Should involve a budget.
I would think that it would happen during the budgeting process because it affects our budget, which we have oversight over.
So is that only, okay, we have oversight over the whole budget, right? But when we start looking at things, I'm, we're not playing more devil's advocate than anything here. But when it comes to athletics and, and activities like this, what is the determining factor when we add and take away activities and at what level?
Well, just.
Superintendent, principal, AD, I don't understand that process and I'm not even sure there is a process.
Well, let me, let me say, the stipends for coaches are specifically enumerated in the collective bargaining agreement. This committee has a role in collective bargaining and signs the collective bargaining agreement. So any change to the collective bargaining agreement should come to this committee. There's a suggestion that it's been a demand to bargain over adding this as an approved extracurricular activity. So it clearly falls within the purview of this committee. There have been some instances in the past where things have been done and positions have been created without informing this committee or even the superintendent. And from my perspective, that is unlawful.
So you bring up a good point, right, because the stipends are in there. I, I, again, I keep going back to, what is the process? Again, if we want to add a team or, or take a team away, right? Is it, are we held hostage to what the stipends are in the contract? Or is there, what I can see, I don't think there is a process, right? So I would kind of challenge the superintendent administration. If you're gonna add these, there should be guidelines about how you're adding in or deleting anything.
Right, so we can, I think, talk about the process. There could be a form that you fill out that has all the necessary information and it comes to the school committee to look at, to consider. We have had clubs come to us before. We had best buddies come to us before, right? We had, I can't think of it now.
Was it United Sports?
Yeah, Unified Sports come to us. So there have been, I think we have seen some things come before us. And there hasn't been a, a formal structure, but we can, I think it's, I don't think we have to complicate it. We can say, look, we can't, we need more information, we need X, Y, and Z, please come back to us.
I guess my, my point is, this, this is a lack of a process, that's all, sorry.
Well, it's all in the presentation. I think just the memo itself does not obviously give us the, the level of detail.
Right, so we need more information.
We needed more of a presentation to.
So we can ask, can you give us like overall budget effects? Can we look at what the process will be for students to sign up? What is the potential schedule gonna be? We did not ask that for the other two clubs that we have buddies, how often they were gonna meet. We didn't ask for that for Unified Sports. Doesn't mean we can't ask for it here, but we did not ask for it at that time.
We didn't ask for what?
The, the, how often they were going to meet.
Yeah, but the buddy presentations, they came and they discussed and they talked about how certain people would travel and how they were willing to recruit people and, you know, there was, there was more of a presentation.
There was, and people came and advocated for it rather than just about. Did we just ask for that destination?
And something like this, when you do athletics, right, you're required to maintain certain rights. Is that the same for all clubs? It is, it is.
And there's also the whole medical, you know, with, as Mr. Pierce brought up, screening time. You know, is there some sort of identifier if there is a child that might be in front of the screen too much? Or, you know, like it could have harmed them medically, I don't know. I don't know that, I'm not a medical patient. Athletic training might have to evaluate them, who knows? Okay, so.
And you may have students who are, and I'm just looking here, I found a little bit more information. Tuesdays is one game, all, each day matches begin at three-thirty. Tuesdays is one game, Wednesdays is the second, Thursdays is the third game. I don't know about how long those, each of those matches are. But my guess is students are probably, many of these students and just not many students in general are probably going home and just sitting in front of their television playing video games anyway. A lot, a lot of them are.
I deny that.
So.
And who knows, maybe there could be some discussion, we could find some other activities that could be incorporated into those team times when they get together. I, I know, for example, the, the, the girls soccer team a couple of years ago was very involved in having like bonding exercises. And they did different things like yoga and things like that. I don't know, maybe that could be thrown into this. So these kids are now, instead of being in their bedrooms, are now in a, a group sport, they have to do things together. I think it's worth finding out more information.
And if there is, I'm not sure what other, if any, schools neighboring us or in, in this part of the state are participating. If they are, we can always learn from, from them, maybe even have someone come here and describe.
And I think universities are also adapting this as well. So this is the way that will come.
Not only are universities having esports programs, they're starting to give scholarships to high school kids.
They're recruiting for it.
Yes.
So is that, is that the consensus of the committee that we're deferring action on this?
For more information.
Right, and there are other matters, Somerset and Berkeley K eight updates. Mr. Giladucci, do you have anything?
Oh, I have a few things. From the K to four department, the student of the month brunches were held on January seventeenth and February seventh. It is always a pleasure to welcome families and invite them to share and dialogue about what they like about our school. The January brunch featured winter weather songs, while the February brunch entertainment consisted up to equal to first graders singing about friendship. The MCAS tutorials have started in earnest. Attendance to date has looked very strong. Teachers report that students are doing a great job and the principal appreciates the efforts of parents to enable students to attend these sessions. The school council received a good response to their online and paper-based version of the input sheet. The council will review all responses and utilize them to shape next year's school improvement plan as well as to share with appropriate groups at our school. The school has greeted six student interns from Bristolton Regional Technical High School to work in some of our kindergarten and preschool classrooms. This is an annual event where VP will send over students to work with the kindergarteners and preschool classes. It's very effective and it's a great opportunity for the students to be involved. The Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Leadership Team had training on January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. The leadership team is working diligently to prepare us to implement PBIS as a school-wide model, Positive Behavior. We are grateful for the preparation work that are going toward this initiative. On February seventh, our third and fourth graders attended the dress rehearsal of the Berkeley Middle School production of Willy Wonka and the Chalk the Factory. Thanks go to the drama club as well as our principal and teacher at the middle school. It was a very successful play, it comes up in the middle school. In honor of Health Month, we celebrated Where Red on Friday, February one, show our support to this, of its worthwhile cause. All proceeds went to the American Heart Association. Also during the month, we will celebrate heart health awareness with our hopes for heart and all people who should have checkups should do so. We want them to stay around, we don't want them to leave us, okay? Our grade eight are beginning to hear from the. Our grade eight are beginning to hear from the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School on course selections and high school scheduling. They had the opportunity to hear from Ms. Elizabeth Coogan, head of guidance from the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, along with other members of her guidance team on the 5th of February. So they are getting more and more involved in working with our eighth graders. And we are proud to be offering this year's theater performance of Willy Wonka for our viewing pleasure on Friday, Saturday, on the 8th and 9th at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday on the 10th at 2:00 p.m. And by the way, to show who did support that and who really operated the whole program for Willy Wonka, in fact, Willy Wonka was a female. So Emily Nowaki, Delaney Wilson, Reed Fortier, and Cruz Whiting called from the high school. Emily choreographed the whole show. She's phenomenal. And Delaney did the backstage work, and Reed handled the lighting. So the high school kids made sure the program went over well. The other thing that the middle school is really grateful for, Chromebooks were donated by the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School and are up and running and being used in both social sciences and the L.A. classes in grade eight. Our students are able to start using Google Classroom and becoming familiar with this platform for learning, which will be a huge help when they transition to the high school. So that is really great. They have Chromebooks from here. The other thing I wanted to bring up to date is our DECA program did extremely well in Mansfield, and we have our top 10 students and our teams. Lauren Fitzpatrick, we know, did the community project on Mason Stern, had a 99 at the competition. Caitlin Fagan and Madison Amaral in creative marketing had a 95. Their project was vaping. I think they worked with the superintendent. Carol Anne Francisco and Juliana Richards on travel and tourism had 94.33. Kathleen Machado had principles of marketing, where she did a 92.66. Michael Gagliardi in marketing and communication had a 91.53. Olivia Edman and Julia Travasis, business, law, and ethics, teen, 91.33. Guy Parento, retail merchandising, had an 88.33. Carissa Emanuel and Gwen Dukos, business law, teen, 88.16. Cam Almeida and Jerry Madeiras, financial services, teen, 87.83. We had a tie for 10th with Vanessa Raposa in business services, had an 87. Emma Schoonover and Kathleen Sullivan, buying and merchandising, had an 87. The other thing we're very proud of, this year we started competing in a program where you submit a booklet of your project, and then you go in and you make an oral presentation. And Laura Fitzpatrick has done that. Kathleen Fagan and Madison Amaral have done that. And every one of the written project teams qualified to go to Boston. And Sarah Kamera was invited to New York Parsons School of Design. We don't know how this happened because the booklets go to Dean College, so we think it must have been one of the Dean College professors who recommended to Parsons to have Sarah attend. And we found out also, it was not only across the United States, but Sarah called us and said it was an international competition. There were students there from China, Australia, and other parts of the world. And I know our newspaper did a great job of writing up about Sarah. The other written projects that are going to Boston are Brad King and Ethan Robideau. They're in public relations, and they did a project of the Berkeley library because they vowed to get new members signing up for the library, and they did a wonderful job of creating the new members, and their drive was for 100 new members. And I think there were somewhere around 80 to 90. So they're on their way. Ellie Foley is doing bracelets for cancer. That's her project, and she will be going. Amber Madeiras and Joyce Nagnan did the Fork and Spoon Restaurant, the little restaurant that's right next door to Dunkin' Donuts. They did a project on her, and they're going to Boston because of the work they did. The other thing that's gonna be happening is the mock competition on February 27th, which is gonna be held. I know a number of you people are gonna be involved. In fact, this year, Michael Gagliardi is our key organizer. 10 students are organizing the program, and they're doing all the work. So if you hear from anybody, you'll hear from students because they're running the whole show. So we have to be very proud of what the DECA people have done this year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything to report from the Somerset K.A. School meeting?
We had a meeting on Monday. The majority of the time was discussing the budget, and the budget for the K through eight wasn't approved. Some of the key things that, maybe you can jump in, the need is, we are going to start a program we're going with eighth grade Chromebooks to have a one-to-one initiative. So similar to the high school, moving that forward in the eighth grade. We did want to initially look at doing six through eight, but with budget constraints and making that aggressive of a move with positions and everything else, because we couldn't do that all at once. But that hopefully will assist in that transition from eighth grade to the high school with having a year under development, using the technology and the Chromebooks as well. We're looking to move the preschool from Chase Elementary over to North. We do have some work. We have to do capital improvements and such to accommodate that, but we do have some space issues that we are, capacity issues that we're dealing with, with the redistrict that we voted two years ago. But mainly for us here on the K through, on the region, while the budget did approve the grant write-in, which was a whole position that we wanted to share with the region as well, so that was successful. And Mrs....
All right. I think those are definitely highlights from the budget. The... One of the other things is, we have the elementary school assessment done, right? So we had a firm comment and look at that. I believe Jeff and Lindsay have a report. We haven't been able to review that report yet, but we're pretty anxious to see what that says as far as the facilities, you know, what kind of shape the facilities are in so we can figure out what we need to do with capital plan-wise. And Mrs. Rothwell did mention, you know, overcrowding is definitely an issue with Chase, which allowed me to move the preschool. There was some discussion about looking at redistricting again, but more in the eyes of having schools that are, you know, K to one, two, three, three to five, whatever. So I think that's starting to pick up a little bit more steam, and we'll, you know, see more of that in the near future.
There would be a lot of work put into that to organize such a mass change, but it's been evaluated in regards to, or at least it's been discussed to have a committee to evaluate the pros and cons and the cost of that. And is there...
Thank you. The next item is a report on the Bristol County Chamber of Commerce Education Committee meeting. Mrs. Gagliardi?
Actually, we had a meeting. I was very pleased that Superintendent Schoonover was able to present some concrete data on the value of the responsive classroom training to the impact on the middle school specifically. I don't know if you want to mention a little bit about, but just in general terms, actually.
Yeah, so in terms of looking at a full year period, conduct referrals, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, detentions, every category related to discipline had, let's say, between about a 35 and a 45 percent drop. Now, I shared this with the school committee, Somerset School Committee, I think in December, but we've seen some, significant decreases in all aspects of discipline, and they all began immediately upon the implementation of responsive classroom at the middle school in November of 2017.
So the Bristol County Chamber Committee is looking to continue funding for that and working collaboratively with the area school districts on that because we think that actually showed some evidence that it is having a positive impact. We're looking to continue or expand the program to actually have parents come onboard to BCC for a parent night, which would expose them to the opportunity of getting their children at BCC for a first couple of years, or first year, in order to save money on the cost of our college education. And the target market is really the gateway cities of New Bedford and Fall River, where that's an issue, but they continue to work on that. And then we were very happy to have at our table another director of enrollment at BCC who will help us kind of put together a survey of what high schools in the area do as far as early college or dual enrollment. And the hope is to try to gather that information, find out ways to fund it, in kind of a standard way that that can be offered to all high schools in the area, because that's a great option. So we're in the process of getting that information. And I know that Superintendent Schoonover has already been in touch with BCC now in regards to that for our particular... So... Oh, and then last thing is, we do have our Early Childhood Summit is scheduled for March 15th, and that will be at BCC from 8:00 to 12:00. It's really an opportunity for the business community to learn about the value of investing in that future workforce. And we'll talk about the science behind early education and the value that it brings in reducing, in better preparing kids to succeed at school, but also reducing other social costs because these kids, you know, who finished in school at a early age. Those are the things we talked about.
And we had the date previously, but has the schedule been finalized? Has the keynote speaker been established for that?
There are two speakers. We haven't decided yet who's gonna be the keynote, so there are two speakers. There will be some preliminary showing of a documentary called No Small Matter, and I can bring information to the school committee about that at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Next item is a report on Fund Our Future Coalition's Chapter 70 Forum. There was a forum here at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School about a week ago that was sponsored by the Massachusetts Teachers Association. There were teachers and school committee members from various districts in this area. The Somerset Teachers, excuse me, the Massachusetts Teachers Association president was there and spoke, and the association is working very hard on Chapter 70 reform. People are probably aware that Governor Baker has made some proposals in his budget for FY '20 that would address some of the concerns in the Chapter 70 budget formula. The proposal from the Massachusetts Teachers Association is somewhat, quite a bit more aggressive in terms of Chapter 70 reforms, and there were members of our legislative delegation who attended the forum as well, particularly Senator Roderick, Representative from Swansea and also from Fall River. Representative Hadad was not able to be there because she had another meeting to attend, but it was informative, and I think we'll be hearing more from the Teachers Association in terms of support from the school committee in terms of where the legislative process is headed. So we can look forward to hearing more about that as time goes on. The next item on the agenda is follow-up report on student and faculty bullying presentations, and I'd like to defer that. One of the reasons is, I'd hope to have some input from our student representative, Ryan Sullivan, and he's not able to be here tonight. I've also, I've started to look at the materials that were left by the speaker who addressed the students on bullying. I haven't been able to go through all of it as yet. It's one sort of curriculum for an anti-bullying program, but it's certainly not the only one, and I think we could have some productive discussion about that as time goes on, but not this evening, if that's okay with the committee. So at this point, we would like to recognize our January Students of the Month. Brandon Almeida in English Language Arts, Matthew Almeida in Social Studies, Mina Almeida in Music. I wonder if they're all in the same family. Jackson Costa Wellness, Dante Franco World Languages, Sydney Ledger Science, Bethany Martin Business, Zachary Martins Mathematics, Andrew Willett Technology, and Miley Setzer Art. So congratulations to all of them. Next item is approval of the minutes of prior meetings. There were some very minor editorial changes on these minutes, really very, very minor, just typographical things. And so with those changes, I entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 24th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? Any absence of discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Next, executive session minutes of January 24th, 2019. I entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Can I, how do I make a request an amendment to it? Like, in looking at the first sentence, I don't know if it necessarily means to be there.
Well...
Is that something that's discussing executive session?
Yes, I would say we're gonna have a discussion on executive session minutes. We should defer it to our next meeting, and we'll schedule an executive session. Okay? So we'll defer the approval of the executive session minutes of January 24th. Next topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There are no such topics. And action items for future meetings. I will put the annual reports from the South Coast Collaborative and the Reed's Collaborative on a future agenda so that if anyone has any questions or concerns, we could discuss them at that time. Is there anything else that...
We're gonna pick up remote classroom participation at some point.
Okay.
Can we have Sarah come and make a presentation?
We can invite her to do that.
Because she did create some photographs, and she's got a good presentation.
Okay. All right. So at this point, is there public input? If there is no, if there is no public input, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you, everyone.